I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action today is final on item one point five, special permit one nine zero four five. Any aggrieved person may file, may appeal, final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October second, two thousand and nineteen.
Move approval, Beckyus?
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry?
Okay.
Albardre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item one point one A is annexation one nine zero zero eight to amend the Woodlands at Yankee Hill planned unit development by annexing approximately fifteen point nine seven acres and the associated change of zone zero five zero six eight F from A G Agricultural District to R three Residential District planned unit development to expand the Woodlands at Yankee Hill planned unit development by approximately fifteen point nine seven acres to allow for an additional forty-seven dwelling units, both on property generally located at South eighty-fourth Street and Yankee Woods Drive. Item one point two is change of zone twenty-four sixty-three F from O two Suburban Office District to B to Planned Neighborhood Business District to amend the planned unit development to include an adjacent property to the east on property generally located at forty-seven forty-seven Old Cheney Road. Item one point three A is change of zone one nine zero two-two from R two Residential to R two Residential Landmark Designation on property generally located at thirty-four sixty East Pershing Road and the associated special permit one eight zero four four to allow for the construction of a detached garage with waivers to height, lot and area and other zoning restrictions on a newly designated historic landmark, being property generally located at thirty-four sixty East Pershing Road. Item one point four A is change of zone one nine zero two-five from R five Residential District to R six Residential District on property generally located at four thousand Huntington Avenue and thirty-seven eleven Baldwin Avenue and the associated street and alley vacation one nine zero zero seven to vacate the North Fortieth Street right-of-way from the north line of Huntington Avenue to the south line of Baldwin Avenue generally located at adjacent to four thousand Huntington Avenue and thirty-seven eleven Baldwin Avenue. Item one point five is special permit one nine zero four five to allow for the reconstruction of an existing garage with setback waivers on property generally located at twenty-six seventy-two Sewell Street. I would note again that this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within fourteen days. And item one point six is pre-existing use permit three A I for an amendment to the Gateway Shopping Center Use Permit with waivers to maximum building height, parking requirements and setbacks on property generally located at two twenty-five North Cotner Boulevard. I would also note on this item that staff has submitted a memo to the Planning Commission relating to a motion to amend on this item. Item one point seven is miscellaneous one nine zero zero three to vacate a final plat on property generally located at North one hundred and forty-eighth Street and Havelock Avenue. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these agenda items? If so, please stand and state those items or that item.
Okay, not seeing any, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Move approval, Edgerton?
Albardre, second.
Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval as amended, this, is that included in the motion? The motion to amend for the pre-existing use permit?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Albardre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional timer is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your ceremony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, item four point one is comprehensive plan conformance one nine zero one three to review the proposed Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five as to conformance with the twenty forty Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommendation is a finding of conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Paul Barnes with the Planning Department. I'd first like to take a moment to introduce a newer member of our staff. I believe some of you have met Alan Zaff, possibly at Commissioner Harris's going away party. But Alan joined our staff as the MPO Transportation Planner in June earlier this year, and he came to us from Grand Island where he worked there for a couple of years at their MPO. Previous experience includes private sector and public sector experience, about eighteen years total in the field, but we're very pleased to have Alan on staff and just wanted to introduce him during his first Planning Commission hearing. Thank you.
Dun dun dun.
Hello. Good afternoon. Alan Zaff, like Paul mentioned, Planner, Lincoln Lancaster Planning Department. And annually Lancaster County is required to prepare and submit a county road and bridge construction program to the state, and this is required by state law, and this program's also known as the One and Six Plan, another name for it. So each year this document is brought forth to the Planning Commission for review. The staff report goes over the entire road and bridge program for fiscal years two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five. This program does go to the County Board later this month for approval. My review is simply to look over the program to ensure, in relation to the comp plan, to ensure or to review for conformity. My recommendation is the proposed program is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. I do want to note the proposed program is, works in the framework of the long-range transportation plan for the region, and the majority of the projects are shown in the staff report focus on system preservation and maintenance, as you will see, and I'm going to transition over to Pam Dingman, the county engineer, to provide more details on the proposed program.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Unlike the last time I was here to talk to you guys, I don't have a cold anymore, so I can actually talk, which is very nice. Are we, are we up and running, sort of?
Yeah, for one brief second, there we go.
There we go. As I stated earlier, I'm Pam Dingman, I'm Lancaster County Engineer. Today with me in the audience is Larry Legg, who is the Assistant Lancaster County Engineer, and I'm here today for my annual visit to talk about my one and six road program. And so much of this year could probably be defined by this photo. I don't know how I'm still smiling. I will tell you that my truck driving skills last winter became dramatically improved, although I'm not really sure that should ever truly be a requirement of a county engineer. The flooding in March of two thousand and nineteen obviously had some devastating effects on my office. It's more of a different day, same old story. Our system no longer has the resiliency to handle these repeated weather events. So in the event of March of two thousand and nineteen, we had probably somewhere over fifty inches of snow on the ground, and then it began to rain. And so we really transitioned from winter to spring in about four hours. It was the perfect storm since the surfaces all over the county were what engineers considered to be impervious, so there was no, no attenuation of that rainfall at all. And so what I'm showing you on this slide is in red on the map, Mark Lancaster County is every road that we have reconstructed or rebuilt since the Bomb Cyclone Event. This was significant to us on many levels, much more significant than the May of two thousand and fifteen flooding. In addition to what we experienced in May of two thousand and fifteen, really having the ground now in this quasi-frozen state, we began to experience things such as frostboils, which really are more of a Canadian phenomenon where you have a surface that is frozen and then underneath you have a zone of completely liquefied ground. We did indeed get many motor graders stuck. I think, I think we probably had to call the wrecker out well over thirty times. At one point I had two motor graders and a wrecker stuck on Saltillo off the edge of the pavement, and I must confess, I just threw up my hands and said, "The road is closed until we can figure something out." And so we did determine that in Canada they, they drill holes every twenty-five feet, six feet deep in the road when they have a frost boil, and they pack it full of salt, and the road is firm in the morning. Having really no other solution, we did try it, and indeed it did work, except for one thing, we were really out of salt also. So what we did discover that if you have a winter that's really super bad and you are always one truck load of salt away from running completely out of salt to keep your roads open, you can actually have your sandbagging operation in your salt dome so your people don't have to be in the rain. I mean, sometimes that's all you have in life, right? We obviously have a big process. It's going to take a long time for us to get these roads back into shape. A lot of times I think we live in a Burger King culture, you can have it your way, and now these roads are going to take years to get back into the condition that they were prior to this event, and it also really took us about two or three years to get them back into shape from the two thousand and fifteen event. Also during the Bomb Cyclone Event, we experienced something. We have an aging fleet, and then for some reason, as an occasion happens, we have a couple lots of trucks that just aren't that awesome. And we actually got down to where only five of our twenty-three plows were running. This is a really bad situation to be in, and obviously goes back to what I quoted earlier in my presentation, that we need to find a way to be resilient in the county if we're to keep anticipating these weather events, and I do think they're here to stay. So just a couple pictures. This is Bridge B one thirty-three. It is on our scour susceptible list. It gives you an idea of the magnitude. This is Rock Creek on the far north end of the county. You can actually see the large sheets of ice that pushed out of the drainage way and across the road. As they push across the road also, what we had is, and many times the roadbed was washed away, the gravel was now washed in the field. It's not really recoverable to get it and put it back on the road, so this becomes a road that we need to rebuild. In addition, we also experienced a number of what I'll call dramatic embankment failures or large-scale global failures. It's really something we study in geotechnical engineering, which is really the study of soils and soil mechanics. I saw a lot of things this year in our system that I'd seen theoretically in the classroom that, quite frankly, I never wanted to see in my true professional life. This is a photo of a large-scale embankment failure. They kind of fail on a half moon, so if you look at it, it kind of almost looks like it can make a perfect circle. It's kind of cool, again, and it really, I know it's probably wrong to say that. In the middle of the slide, you may note a yellow probe, that is a five-foot probe. It's kind of our device to determine whether something is stable or not. You come along with the probe and you give it a couple hits and the probe doesn't go down, you go, "Good." And then you hit it again, "Good." Not good. So we've had a lot of not-good moments in the county this year. We're hoping to continue to work on those. Another area, couple areas of dramatic concern to us on federal aid routes were Adams Street between Ninety-Eight Street and between Eighty-Fourth Street, as well as Agnew Road just east of Highway seventy-seven. We did receive, or we expect to receive reimbursement from the Federal Highway Administration for the replacement of, it's a bridge length box culvert K one twenty-one on Adams Street. They will reimburse us at eighty percent of the cost to replace that, and then we do expect to receive a hundred percent reimbursement for the D eighty-eight bridge located on Agnew Road. And so K one twenty-one on Adams is at the top photo. You can see that there was a dramatic hole on either side of the box culvert. What you can't see is there's also a four-to-five-foot hole underneath the box culvert for the entire length of the culvert, which is why we closed it. And a lot of times I will get calls from people saying, "Well, hey, that road looks perfectly good and why isn't it open?" I will assure you that we do not close roads lightly, but if a void exists under these structures, we simply cannot leave them open. They must be closed for the safety of the public. FEMA in our two thousand and nineteen process, FEMA has promised me that they will be better this time than they were in two thousand and fifteen. Incidentally, we are still waiting on about four hundred and forty thousand dollars of reimbursement from FEMA in two thousand and fifteen. We're currently in an appeal process because FEMA has determined that we only need two inches of gravel to construct a gravel road. And so I don't know who made that determination. We've appealed it twice, we're going to appeal it a third time. I feel that we need to stay in the appeal process because it's what's right for the Lancaster County taxpayers. Our current claim with FEMA for the damage, both from March of two thousand and nineteen and May of two thousand and nineteen, is somewhere in the neighborhood of about one point seven million dollars. They have told me that I probably won't see any reimbursement for that until maybe February or March of next year, or maybe late fall a year from now. And so this continues to create an issue for my department because in essence what we're doing is, is we're funding a future federal government reimbursement that we may or may not receive. Just a quick note so that you can kind of get the order of magnitude of what we dealt with in the county engineering department, really during my tenure. On the screen is a snapshot of the Rock Creek Drainage Basin. It is primarily located in the northeast area of the county, way up on the county line. I like to joke that Saunders County is gracious enough to give us a lot of their drainage. I know, who knew, right? Very giving people up there. They, they kind of give us some. This drainage basin goes way north of the county and actually meets with, with Salt Creek, again, just north of Waverly. What's interesting about Rock Creek is its flood stage is twenty-three feet. On a day-to-day basis, that creek is probably three to four feet deep. It reached its record high in March of two thousand and nineteen of a little over twenty-five feet. Its second record is May of two thousand and fourteen at twenty-four point one five. Its third record is, is May of fifteen, and the fifth record is May of seventeen. So of the top five events for this gauge, four of them have been in my tenure as county engineer, and this gauge is not a new gauge, so this continues to be a concern for us. The other thing is, is that it may not, we may not get a lot of rain in Lancaster County. We have eight hundred and forty-six square mile jurisdiction, and it may be raining just kind of on the north side of the county, but then when all the drainage comes down from Saunders County, we can still have some pretty significant rainfall events on the north boundary of the county that maybe we're not experiencing within the city itself. Just a quick note of what this meant to my system as a whole. So the flooding of March of two thousand and nineteen, we really started off with forty-two critical bridges that we watch on a regular basis. Some of them are defined as scour critical. That is a definition made by the Nebraska Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. Some of them we define internally as scour susceptible. We put that name on it ourselves if it's a bridge that is in a similar drainage basin of a similar type construction and a similar type age as the adjacent bridges to it. After the event of March of two thousand and nineteen, unfortunately, we went in the wrong direction. We added twenty to this list, twenty new bridges to this watch list. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge my staff. There's obviously many challenges when we come to this. We have implemented a number of procedures and policies when dealing with emergencies in the last several years that I do believe have made a big difference. On the screen to the right, you will see a bright orange map. We don't really like to see the color orange on the map. What we do with this map is we take, we go out and we harvest rainfall data from Weather Underground and from the USGS weather gauges, and we superimpose that detailed information on all eight hundred and forty-six miles of the county. What you're seeing is the drainage basins of those critical bridges I just talked about. That way we know the darker the color, those are the ones we go out and inspect first because those are the areas that receive the highest rainfall. We are required to have a emergency plan of action for all the bridges that are on the scour critical list. We also follow that same plan for the scour susceptible list. Also on this picture, you will see from the additional flooding in May of two thousand and nineteen, we never got a chance to dry the ground out. So now we have a new thing as we go on. The ground completely liquefies and we have sudden and dramatic failure of many pipes around Lancaster County, in fact, about twelve of them. Enough of them completely, again, completely random on construction, year, size, location, failure, just complete failure. There's a picture, and the Assistant Maintenance Supervisor probably wouldn't appreciate that I put him in the picture, so please don't tell him. Hopefully he won't watch the video. He is about six-eight, so he's not a little guy. He, he's standing by a road that is starting to fail. So if you're out in the county and you see something like this, this is not a road that you want to be driving on. People will call me and say, "Hey, I don't think something looks right with this road." And indeed, something is not right. On the bottom picture, it's a little hard to see where he is standing. That probe is stuck all the way in the ground because it is failing, and it is completely hollow underneath that road. So in the middle of the screen, you can see a large pipe. At first, when I saw this picture, I thought someone had dumped cornstalks on our road, and then what you don't realize is the water had actually gotten up high enough and pushed the cornstalks onto the road. It's an eleven-foot hole. It's an eleven-foot hole. So these are the things that my year has been made of. They haven't been all that fun, but we have learned some ways to deal with them a little more efficiently and effectively than in the past. Just for continued, I don't know, continued dramatic effect, I guess, for lack of a better phrase. This is the same, the same road where the truck was sitting. This is what it looked like the next day. It just had completely fallen in. Again, this goes back to the need to create a system, an infrastructure system in the county that is resilient. A lot of these things are because our infrastructure is aged and old, and we have not had the assets to appropriately take care of and maintain these. We actually have had two declared emergency events this year, one in March and one in May. So where has this left us? Although we have been able to get some of the bridges back open, some of them were under construction or we had plans for already, we were lucky. Bridge, we have twenty bridges that are currently closed. Eleven of them are in some process of design or construction. Nine have no funding source to either start the design or construction of. And so that means that what we're going to look at with these bridges is long-term closure before repair. And people talk to me a lot about, "Hey, that bridge is, it took you three years to get to it after it was closed." That's true, because we do have to have funding to start it. There's another thing that a lot of people don't realize, and that's that when these bridges fail, K one twenty-one, Mr. Legg, who is in the audience, worked really hard to get that bridge on Adams Street back open and designed. Typically, to design and permit these takes a year, and to construct them takes about another year to get it all the way through the bid process. So when I close a bridge and I don't have a plan or funding for it, we really look at that it goes three or more years out. Showing on the map here in, in red are bridges that are currently closed that have no funding source. It has not made me popular in the county, I'm not going to lie. So if we're to look at overall what are our current bridge needs, actually before the, before the weather events of this year, they were determined in a study by Olson and Associates. I did check my notes. I did talk to you about that last year, so I'm not going to talk to you about it a lot this year. Olson and Associates made a determination through the task force that we had a two-hundred million dollar funding gap when it came to bridges. How that breaks down is we have twenty-six that are structurally deficient. That means they can't hold a standard load. We have to load rate them. If you're out in the county and you see a load-posted bridge, that means you're on a structurally deficient bridge. Four that are functionally obsolete, typically that means they're not wide enough to pass two-lane traffic. Thirty-nine that are scour susceptible, Lancaster County term when we're watching them. Twenty-three that are scour critical, plan of action through the Federal Highway Administration. Twenty with a sufficiency rating of less than fifty on a hundred-point scale. Twenty. And so you may recall in the LRTP, it said those bridges should be slated for replacement. And then what becomes more interesting, if we're to look at square foot of bad bridge, which is kind of a super nerdy engineering, and we're to go to the Nebraska Department of Transportation's website and see like, "Hey, where do we rate?" Because often I hear, "Well, everybody's got bad bridges, Pam, it's not just you." On, on percentage of square footage, we're sixty-fifth out of ninety- On percentage of square footage, we're 65th out of 93. And so what I've continued to say as I speak around the county about our needs for infrastructure is, there's really not anything else that Lancaster County would strive to be like, yay, we're 65th. It's kind of sad to me. I've talked to you before about my concerns about subdivisions. We just approved another one on the consent agenda. Lancaster County currently maintains about 100 subdivisions. I think there's probably another 100 or so in the queue. What really happens with these is if you have a house that is assessed, an acreage house that is assessed at $500,000, it's a beautiful, nice home, what really comes to the county engineering department, once we maintain that road to take care of that subdivision from that assessed value, is about $48. So as we continue to grow as a county, we have set up a system that has no way, no way to be sustained. That is something that I'm going to continue to speak to you about, I'm going to continue to speak to the commissioners about, because we have to come up with something different. We're already so far behind funding, but also to dramatically subsidize these subdivisions for the maintenance of their roads and their snow removal continues to be an increasing burden to my organization. We currently maintain about 40 miles of gravel subdivisions and about 34 miles of paved subdivisions. Again, here's a map. We didn't do any new paving in Lancaster County last year. I'm hoping, I have a couple miles of new paving on the standby list for this year. We still really have 28 miles with over 300 cars a day at, on these roads every day. We really know that the gravel, with the travel we have on today and the vehicles we have today, really starts to fall apart at 300. We have seven miles that have more than 400 cars a day on it, which means that it's really difficult for us to put a motor grader on that gravel and keep it maintained to a nice standard under those traffic conditions. And on occasion, we have people who try to share the road a little too close with our motor graders, and we really have some dangerous situations out there. I want to talk a little bit about projects that are, were completed or in process. If we refer back directly to the 1 and 6 now, in FY19, we were able to get seven bridges constructed. They were mostly bridge-to-box culvert projects. We do have a bridge-to-bridge. I am hoping, weather permitting, that I can open that up on the 15th. So I'm going to go ahead and include it in that seven, and that's the bridge on Raymond Road. You may recall, that was a 40-foot bridge that's being replaced with a 140-foot bridge to meet modern drainage standards and meet some other requirements environmentally in the area. We have two bridges that we were able to repair and get back open. We have eight that we have designed, and we have one bridge, and I'm going to talk about it a little further on in the presentation, that has some really complex permitting issues. We have some really complex environmental issues with the saline wetlands, the Tiger Beetle, and the endangered salt wart plant in Lancaster County that we have to pay a lot of attention to. Additional projects completed with the pavement in Lancaster County. We did overlay about 15.2 miles of asphalt this year. We tried some new things to stretch our dollars a little further now that we're getting caught up. In the past, I've spoke to you that we needed just a little under 100 miles of our 300 miles needed some form of maintenance. I'm happy to announce that as we have aggressively maintained that asphalt the last five years, we're down to about 40 miles of that. We tried some stuff like chip sealing this year. We're going to, we're going to talk about whether we're going to try that again next year because we know that extends the life of our asphalt, as well as a hot-in-place recycle, where it's really kind of known as the asphalt train. They come in, it's a, it's a series of vehicles. They kind of grind off the top half an inch. It goes behind them. It gets mixed with new emulsifier. And in essence, what happens is we get two inches of new asphalt that replaces two inches of old asphalt with nothing that leaves the site. So that's always kind of exciting when we can pull that off. Of course, every condition doesn't, doesn't meet that, but when it can, we know that it creates a really good slab, and it's actually cheaper than traditional mill and overlay. So we did grade two miles of South 82nd Street this year. That's really in anticipation for the Beltway project. There's some connections that happen at that location. And then in addition to that, we are working on the engineering for approximately three miles of new road. If we're to look at the proposed FY20 or the current budget year for the 1 and 6, and I'd like to remind you that what I do every year is I take the money that we were allocated in the current budget year, and I project it forward in years 2 through 6. That is a statutory requirement, so by no means does this presentation encompass what are the true needs of my organization. I typically come to the budget table and ask for 1% to 2% of the county's infrastructure needs. During my tenure as county engineer, I have never received that ask. It has always been cut. When we're to come forward and we look at bridges that we're going to look at constructing next year, we're going to look at constructing nine. We hope to repair another two, and we're going to work to get another three designed. In addition to that, we're going to look at asphalt overlay for approximately 21 miles of our system, and we're going to maintain another 18 and 1/2 miles with either the chip seal or the hot-in-place or fog seals, which we know can dramatically extend the life of our asphalt. We really don't want to get to the point where we're patching potholes because you're too far. You're too far gone at that point. And then in addition, we're going to look at engineering four miles of road, which is mainly consists of 98th Street, A to O, and 98th Street, Old Cheney to A. Here is a picture. I think they have the south end of the county before. So the first picture is projects that's associated with the paving projects, projects in the south end of the county that you can see. Purple is overlay. Green would be proposed pavement, and blue, blue is design. And so we're still in the design process with Saltillo. The Nebraska Department of Transportation has asked us to kind of wait on that design until they have some other things in the area taken care of, but we do hope to continue to proceed forward with that project in the future. If we're to look at the north end of the county, what I'm looking at, I think I skipped over one here. If we're to look at the north end of the county for 2020, what I'm really looking at is some additional work on that D-88 bridge that I talked to you about earlier, as well as we do have a bridge that we received a NEMA grant from that has been moving along in the system, not quite as fast as I'd like to, but I'm hoping to get that bridge back open this year. As we look at the out years, FY21 through FY25, this is what the north end of the county ends up looking like. The circled X is actually a bridge that's closed. It is always sad to me when I have to put those closed bridges out in that year 2 through 6, because I do know that really affects the community that lives around that bridge. You may notice in this, a focus on North 14th Street. About two years ago, I thought I could make our list smaller if we looked at critical needs on pavement, and we attacked those problems first because those are the roads with our highest traffic on it. It became immediately evident to me that we have a clear and dramatic problem on North 14th Street. And indeed, I have four structures in about 2 and 1/2 miles that are all very bad. So when you look at this, Bridge F-88 is the bridge that's in permitting. The bridge has been designed for some time. It is over saline wetlands, and so we have a number of things that we're having to do to keep that moving along, and hopefully, hopefully, we have the permit sometime this winter. It is going to probably, it is going to be a very expensive bridge because it is a larger bridge. And then we have Bridges F-78, 82, and 86. Incidentally, these are all WPA bridges that were built in the 1930s. What becomes interesting about them, they're on a spread footing, just like your house. You've heard me talk to you about them before. We seem to have quite a collection of them, even though I keep removing them from the system. What becomes interesting is that Engineer Nurburger, in the 70s, when North 14th Street was paved, made the decision to cut the bridge decks off of these old bridges, and then to save money, raise them up with a new deck and save the, save the abutments. I can, I can second-guess him at this point and say that probably wasn't a very good decision, except for he does have in his notes that he did this to save money because of the lack of funding in the county at the time. Obviously, it's not a new problem. And he also has in his notes that this solution, he expected not to last more than 20 years. We're well, we're well past that corridor. As we're to look at the south end of the county for FY21 through FY25, you'll see a number of those Xs that are circled. They are larger bridges in many cases that are going to be well over $1 million. What I've really been picking off on the system is those smaller bridge-to-box culvert projects where we can transition them for $250,000 to $350,000, sometimes a little more. Really, what's left is not those kind of structures. And so we're going to see going forward that the structures are going to become more expensive, which means the permitting is going to become more complex, and we're going to need more dollars to build bigger but less bridges overall. Also shown on this map is 98th Street, the 98th Street corridor, and then, yes, the Saltillo corridor. So with that, I'll take any questions you have. Again, I don't know why I'm smiling in this picture. I'm standing in a snowdrift when it's 10 degrees with 30 mile-an-hour winds, but I'm still smiling, and we're still going to try to continue to move forward with the infrastructure.
Questions for Pam?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is for either Alan or Pam. So the lists of projects that we received, I'm sure conformed to the ideals of the comprehensive plan, but at what point, at what point do the projects that are not showing up on these plans constitute a lack of conformance to the comprehensive plan?
Question.
So I, thank you for asking that question, and I'm going to let Alan answer the technicalities of it, but then I'm going to also add, one of the things that the Infrastructure Task Force report recommended was that we create an overall county CIP, and that we also push the CIP out there. It's an interesting thing because such a small amount of our infrastructure needs are funded, but that is how we're going to move forward in order to convey more of the overall needs. So as, as an elected official, it's kind of an interesting thing. As elected county engineer, I have no budget authority. I have no ability to acquire money, other than to keep going out and trying to find grants, and they're not always the easiest thing to find. We do go out and find, find that money wherever we can. It is not always available.
I don't know that you have an answer to the question, Alan.
The only thing I can just mention in regards to the comp plan, because you know, it ties with the LRTP, with the Long Range Transportation Plan, typically on Garske Performance and Garske Projects as it relates to system preservation and maintenance. Typically, these, we don't identify specific projects.
Sure.
Generally support just maintenance projects and system preservation. So, but one thing about the Long Range Plan and the Comp Plan, we do update it every five years.
Sure.
So hopefully, we'll keep the projects in the radar.
I, I think it's also of interest that if you look back at my overall budget, which is spread across three funds, so I have a general fund for administration, a highway fund for maintenance, and a bridge and special road fund for basically new construction. If you go back and look at that, what becomes really interesting is that the highway fund did not have any property tax dollars in it or any revenue from property tax dollars until, until FY15, historically. And so it was strictly federal highway allocation dollars that funded that department, which really meant we weren't putting any property tax into funding the system. That has changed. I will also say, if we're to look at capitalized contracts and compare them over the last 10 years, you'll see if you go back like year nine and 10, capitalized contracts for maintenance were $300,000 to $400,000 a year. We're now over $7 million a year. And I am proud to say again, I'm very proud of the staff and the things we've done in the last five years to modernize. I am putting out that quantity of engineering with a rock star staff that, that has not increased. In fact, the staff has decreased as we've modernized, so.
David Carey with the Planning Department. It's a very good question to ask, and we have that same question on the city side of the conversation about transportation needs and available funding. I would say, I would echo what Pam just said about getting more done in recent years. I think that's absolutely the case. So I think in a trend wave, looking at it, we're doing more than what had been done in the past and getting more of what's being called for in the, both the comprehensive plan and the LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan. So I think we're more in conformance now than we have been. The reality is that there isn't enough funding to do, to meet the needs that we have, and interestingly, the plan already says that. So in a sense, we're, we're kind of reflecting the fact that we acknowledge that in the plan already. So, but what's also in the plan is that there is a call for finding and talking about more funding to get more done, and the county engineer has been doing that. And there's an active discussion right now about county wheel tax and whether or not we get that as part of the funding sources, we don't know yet, but we are definitely saying that we are in conformance of the plan because those efforts are happening. And I would say we're much more effective with our money than we have been in recent past, too. So we're very confident in saying that we are in conformance, but we do need more, and we should try to do more.
And, and my question did not relate to county staff whatsoever, but more precisely to the county board's allocation of funding.
Sure. Thank you.
I think, I think your question comes up every year, and it's a, it's a valid question.
Yeah, go for it.
I have a question with regards to the trend that you're seeing with the flood stages. Have you noticed anyone around us planning any projects to change, say, the drainage ways or look at any type of process to encourage that?
I appreciate that question because what I think is interesting overall about some of the weather events is, we really haven't celebrated the communities who have acted in a resilient way. Waverly, for example, about 10 years ago, implemented a 1% sales tax in their community, and that 1% is dedicated to infrastructure. They use that sales tax to build the dam, the dry dam that is on the south side of I-80. The dry dam during the March 2019 event filled, and it functioned exactly as it was supposed to. The building of the dry dam actually helped Waverly take over 100 residential structures out of the floodplain, and so I do think that that is a big success. I do think communities are going to have to look at more things like that in the future if they're, in order to remain resilient.
Great, thank you.
Pam, you mentioned that, I think it was two inches of gravel is, what, is that what FEMA is saying? How much would you, or what do you prefer to see on there?
So we actually refer back to a state standard. Nebraska Department of Transportation does have a standard, and people don't realize that like making a gravel road has many layers. I sometimes compare it to a seven-layer bar, and then people who aren't into sweets go like, what are you talking about?
How about a seven-layer dip?
Right, right. It's a little different than that. So what we really do initially is, we take rock and we incorporate the rock in with the soil, and you're trying to get it kind of locked together, and then we put additional rock on top of that, and then as that rock compacts down, we put gravel in that to fill the additional voids. That's the process. You know, you really, it kind of depends on the road and how soft it is. You would hope it was more compacted than not, but you know, you really need six to eight inches. So it's a significant amount of, of material in order to make a gravel road. We've also started using a different type of gravel this year. We knew from some studies at the university that if you get gravel with more fines in it, or as I like to call it, the dirty rock, that it actually compacts a little easier. We are using some of that on Northwest 84th Street, and it has worked really well. I don't know whether I want to be totally sold on it yet because I want to see a little bit different year and how it, how it behaves in all weather climates, but we do have to start trying some different things so that we know what does or doesn't work.
You talked a little bit about how long the FEMA reimbursement is taking and that kind of stuff. When you talk about the federal reimbursement dollars, how long does that take to come When you talk about the federal reimbursement dollars, how long does that take to come in?
So it's multiple sources. What we look at is the Federal Highway Administration has, has a program for the federal aid routes. It's separate from FEMA. So the federal aid route, that money comes from the Federal Highway Administration and then down to the Rest Department of Transportation, once it's funded. We do know that they are currently funded, so we're hoping typically when I filed the forms for that money, it comes back fairly quickly.
So within the same fiscal year?
Typically within the same year. With the FEMA, it's just a completely different story. It, it's, it's very complex. They require a lot of documentation. We have had to send them screenshots of GPS locations of our trucks for all the gravel dumps, if you can only imagine going through that process, as well as, as, at the county, we still have paper timesheets because we don't have an automated time system for the people that are in the field. We don't actually have internet service outside of our main office. So it's all paper timesheets. All those, of course, have to be tracked and bundled and scanned and sent to FEMA. It's very labor intensive. Should we get reimbursed, of course, it's worth it, but as we go forward, we need to definitely look at some different processes countywide that will make it easier to track those things. So FEMA then certifies a project. They have a, they have quite a system and then, and then we wait. And then, once the FEMA money has come through and we can prove the project has been done, that's only 75% by the way of the damage. The state of Nebraska through NEMA reimburses the other 12 and a half percent and then the final 12 and a half percent becomes the county's responsibility. So apparently, the answer is more than four years.
Any other questions for staff right now? Well, since you're kind of both the staff and the applicant at the same time, I'm going to go to testimony and support. Any testimony and support? I don't see any. Testimony and opposition? Okay. Think of any other staff questions while I was asking that? Okay, well, I'd entertain a motion.
A move conformance. Beckus?
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
While I think that the plan before us does meet the, or does conform to the comprehensive plan, I think it ought to be noted that the plan also leaves off a number of infrastructure projects that need attention but cannot be met due to the funding limitations presented by the county board. And ultimately, those limitations, if they continue, will continue to be problematic for our community in terms of meeting its goals of conforming to the comprehensive plan.
I agree with everything that Tom said. I want to just point out that in the report that we received or the, the staff report, there's a, a number of references to the fact that aspects of this plan are in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. I think that's a good way to think about it. Although I agree with Tom, I, I, I think that as, as David said, I think we're better off than we have been and, and in a general sense, we are in conformance. Someone vote for it.
It, it saddens me to hear that out of 93 counties, we're ranked 65. I think that kind of hits home, especially when we probably have more population density than a lot of those 93 counties. So I encourage the county board to leave the amount that has been asked for in, in the budget so that we can hopefully kind of move forward on these instead of continually falling behind. But I think this is a solid plan. Okay, Jerry?
Okay, this is finding of conformance for comprehensive plan 19013, which is the proposed Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program. Okay, Al Badre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, the next three items are associated. Item 4.2A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19001, to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to include changes to revise the future land use map and commercial center designations on approximately 150 acres more or less on property generally located at the southwest corner of North 27th Street and Arbor Road. Item 4.2B is Annexation 19001, associated with the proposed Stonebridge Creek Commercial Planned Unit Development. And the associated change of zone, 19002, Stonebridge Creek Commercial Planned Unit Development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District, B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District, R3 Residential District, and I3 Employment Center District to R3 Planned Unit Development. That will include up to 850,000 square feet of commercial floor area, 1,202 multifamily dwelling units, and 50 single-family dwelling units for approval of a development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning and subdivision ordinances on property generally located at the southwest corner of North 27th Street and Arbor Road. Staff recommendation for the change of zone is conditional approval. Staff recommendation for the comprehensive plan is approval and staff recommendation for the annexation is conditional approval. I would note that for change of zone 19002, staff had, has presented a memo to the Planning Commission in regards to a motion to amend. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any. Rachel?
Rachel Jones, Planning Staff. These are three related applications for a large planned unit development or PUD located north of Interstate 80 and west of 27th Street. The applications are a comprehensive plan amendment to revise the future land use and commercial center designation and annexation and a change of zone for the PUD. And as Jerry mentioned, the overall request is for up to 850,000 square feet of commercial area, 1,102 multifamily dwellings, and 50 single-family dwellings. So this exhibit shows the area of development. For reference, we have, this is Arbor Road and Alvo Road. It's showing a future reconfiguration there with the roundabout. This is Humphrey Avenue and then Centurion and then there are some additional internal streets being proposed. In terms of land uses, north of Alvo, we have a proposed multifamily area and commercial. South of Alvo, another large commercial area. Further south, an office and a multifamily area. West of Centurion is additional commercial with some single families, some additional single families south of Humphrey and then another multifamily area. And it does include a pedestrian-oriented town center located here where the store entrances will be oriented internally to facilitate a pedestrian environment. I would like to move next to talking about the annexation. This is a excerpt from the staff report and anytime we annex land, we also annex adjacent rights of way. Arbor Road is, is already annexed up to this white line that you can see here. And this north, this upper exhibit shows the legally obligated area the city would be required to annex, shown in blue here. And below it is an exhibit showing our proposed annexation boundary. So you can see it includes this additional area here at the intersection of 27th and And we are aware that the county engineer is going to be in opposition to this annexation boundary. They would like us to also annex somewhere all of the bridge to the east, but since we are not legally obligated to do that and we don't want to take on the additional maintenance responsibility for that, we will not be including it in our proposed annexation boundary. We did have a, a motion to amend the staff report that was submitted earlier to revise several of the conditions and clarify them. The more, more significant change relates to condition 3.6. That would require traffic calming measures to be installed along Humphrey Avenue between the trail crossing that's to the west of the PUD and then Quandary Road, which is one of the internal streets. And I believe the applicant is going to be requesting a further revision to this that we can discuss and respond to at that time. With that, I'll see if you have any questions for me at this point.
Could you show on a map that area with the Quandary Road?
So, the trail crossing is, let me see if it's showing up here. Is down here to the west.
Okay.
And then Quandary Road is located here. So we're looking for some kind of traffic calming measures somewhere in that area because this is a long straight street and it's also very wide as it's currently built.
So Humphrey Road will extend all the way to Quandary?
Yes, Humphrey Road is, is built up to a point around here and it will eventually extend all the way up through with connections at Quandary and Crestone and then connect up to Alvo.
Okay. Thank you.
And the traffic calming measures are?
Those, we left the wording of the condition open to whatever the applicant can work out with the Transportation Utilities Department. So we don't have a specific improvement identified at this time. We just identified a stretch of Humphrey where we thought that they were appropriate.
I have some questions for you. When I was reading the staff report, I think this is just a typo, but I wanted to make When it talks about, when it starts talking about the, well, it's a number eight. And it's talking about increasing the building height. The heading says B5 and B2 plus areas. Is that really R5?
Yes, that would be R5.
Okay.
You are correct.
So I wanted to make sure that I understood, because we have some industrial and some residential that are kind of close together. So there is a 300-foot buffer between the, the industrial and the residential on basically three sides?
Yes, that's right. The, so in our comprehensive plan and planning and health departments don't support residential use within 300 feet of industrial for safety reasons. And this is a case where this existing I3 industrial zoning has a use permit that already has a condition built in that they have to remain 300 feet, hazardous chemical usage has to remain 300 feet away from any dwellings. So that separation requirement burden is, at least according to city documents, is on that I3 landowner, industrial landowner. So that a 300-foot boundary was not identified for separation on this PUD because the...
So, basically what I want to make sure is those buildings that are currently located in that industrial area, they are 300 feet from the property line?
I think that is a good question for the applicant to, to answer. I believe that there is still a 300-foot separation that they built into this for their own reasons and they can get into what that's measured from.
Okay. I also noticed in the report about bottling works usage, can you give me an example of what a bottling works would be?
My understanding is it would be something like a soft drink plant where they're manufacturing the drinks and bottling them.
Would that be, would that apply to, I know we have a lot of local brewers. Would that apply to them or is that considered separate from bottling?
I can't say I'm sure on that question for the classification. I need to look into that.
There was talk about the water mains and that kind of stuff. Whose responsibility is it for installing the 16-inch water main extension from Alvo Road to Arbor Road? Is that the developer or is that the city that's doing that?
I believe it is the city.
And then there's also some increases in water main sizes, you know, like smaller ones. Is that the developer or is that the city?
That, that also might be a good question for the applicant. The smaller lines, I believe, would be the developer's responsibility to construct based on the size of the pipe.
Can you remind me, the average lot width, is that usually 60 feet?
The average lot width for...
Well, because we're decreasing it down to 40.
Yes. I, in the standard R3, for, for a two-family dwelling, I think it is 40 feet. So in that sense, the, the waiver, and that didn't, I don't think got caught in the review, but the waiver down to 40, that's for a single-family attached, which is also two families, actually would meet the standard. I think there was maybe a little misunderstanding between the applicant and the city about what kind of dwelling they were looking at, but we did confirm it's two-family.
And so then, what is the normal minimum lot area? Is that also?
It's 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
For a two-family dwelling in, in the R3 district.
Is B2 plus just something that the applicant has kind of coined or is that?
Yes.
Okay. I was like, what the heck is B2 plus? I've never heard of this before.
Yeah, it was a term we came up with jointly.
Okay. And then, so is this development considered a B2 PUD or an R3 PUD?
It will be an R3 PUD.
I think that's my questions right now.
I, I have a question about the, the town center aspects of this and I noticed that there were built into the exceptions, if, if the non-pedestrian or if the pedestrian-friendly town center is not built, that that thereby reduces the square footage on the commercial side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Where did the numbers come from? 850... 850 down to 700,000? I mean, what's the rationale or how does that work? And then how does that work with the increase in the number of dwellings that are allowed?
The penalty itself, it relates to, so the request as it stands is for 850,000 square feet, which is a lot, quite a bit above our range in the comprehensive plan for community centers. And so one of the reasons they were allowed to go up to that number was because they were incorporating several of the incentive criteria that we have. You know, one of those or a couple of them have to do with pedestrian-oriented development.
Sure.
And so the town center is an important component from our perspective on supporting the increased square footage so that we had a penalty to reduce the total square footage back down to something closer within the community center range if they ended up developing that differently and not having it be as a town center. But then we had a provision that in exchange, they would be able to build a certain number of additional dwellings under that situation to compensate for the lost square footage and help them to further develop the area administratively without having to come back through with another type of use.
But the 700,000 is still quite, is still generally a little more than what's typically related or what's typically seen?
Yes, it is. Steve, I don't know if you could weigh in on this 700,000 figure?
Sure. Steve Anderson of the Planning Department. Certainly the comprehensive plan as a guide, we try to adhere to it as much as we can. In this circumstance, we are taking into account the fact that this was already a center that was included commercial space and industrial space and together was already approaching that 700,000-plus square footage. So in trying to reconfigure it, it's been sitting there as industrial space without really any takers. We do have other industrial locations shown, Northwest 48th and I-80, for example. Continue to see some interest in that, but overall not a lot. And so that's perhaps why you see a little bit more space here than you might have in other ones.
Okay, that's helpful. And there was also a discussion about office use and trying to encourage a percentage of office use within the mixed use. Can you point on the map where that would be? Where the office, would that be in the town center area?
It could be throughout. Right now on their, on their land use table, which is here, they have uses listed and some of them are called out as, or most of them are called out as office slash commercial. We're having them change that to just be commercial because that term does include office. But they would be required to build that certain percentage of office into it. And it could in theory be on any of those commercial lots.
Okay. But I think you pointed out earlier, but that the foreseen town center area, is that area to the, on the north side, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I can answer the previous question, having the luxury of being able to sit on the sidelines and call up the zoning ordinance. So in terms of a bottling work, that's a term that is found in the manufacturing section of the use groups and applies to areas that are generally an acre or more in size. So in our food and drink establishment use group, we specifically have text that calls out that circumstance that in the food and drink, which is separate from our manufacturing, which is allowed in a lot more districts, it includes a small-scale production and distribution of food and beverages and facilities generally less than one acres in size, for example, a craft brewery or local bakeries. So we are, when you're trying to have a large brewing or plant or a large bottling works, well, that really fits more in industrial. But of course, now we have a lot more small craft breweries, small bakeries. So you're trying to differentiate that the scale is so much different, the truck traffic is so much different, the quantities of potentially hazardous chemicals is so much different, that those are allowed in a lot more districts than the bigger breweries and the bigger bakeries and those type of things.
So a small craft brewery would still be allowed in this PUD, but something large like a Budweiser plant would not be?
Yes. So small bakeries, those are allowed, big bakeries, that's really something more appropriate for industrial.
And to clarify, they would just have to be 300 feet away from?
Residential.
Residential.
Rachel, there was a term, and I don't quite remember what it was, I just wrote it down, in the, in the staff report that talked about discouraging four-corner commercial developments. Could you elaborate on what that means?
Sure. I'm thinking that maybe that was sourced out of the comprehensive plan criteria, maybe.
Okay.
If I had to guess. We, in general, when, I think, when you have commercial development on all four corners, like if you, and a good example would be 27th and Pine Lake Road springs to mind, it becomes kind of auto-oriented and you don't get a mix of uses. And so perhaps it would be, I would say, trying to discourage that level of sameness in favor of more of a diversity of uses.
That's helpful.
Generally, that's what we look for.
Tom?
Because of the bridge issue that has been brought up, could you tell me, has there been any sort of proposed use dedicating the road impact fees discussed between the City of Lincoln and the developer?
Yes, I believe they would have impact fees directed towards adjacent street improvements.
Which streets?
To be honest, I would need to check on that within the annexation agreement.
Main improvement is the large roundabout that's going to be at the intersection of Alvo and Arbor Road. But generally, other turn lanes, if they were meeting the criteria in terms of being not site improvements, but overall improvements, the arterial street system would be included as well. And those are things that were discussed as part of the annexation agreement. You don't have the annexation agreement before you. But generally, this development will generate enough impact fees to be able to repay the developer for those improvements. The city is agreeing as a part of the annexation agreement. There are some other off-site improvements, for instance, some improvements that need to be made at the intersection of I-80 and North 27th Streets, some improvements that need to be made there, that the city has agreed to do those improvements. And partly that's a result of...
The city has agreed to or the city, the developer's requested?
The city has agreed to in the annexation agreement. So for instance, on the south side of the interchange of I-80 and North 27th Street, there probably need to be some improvements there. That traffic is already at about 90% of the threshold of warranting, I believe it's a traffic signal. This helps push it over the top. Okay, well, it didn't generate 100% of the trips that caused for that improvement. So as part of the negotiation with the developer in terms of which things will be funded by the developer and which by the city, there are a few improvements that will be done by the city.
Steve, can you, on the site plan there, illustrate to us where the signalized intersection would be located?
It's, it's a little bit off of the map.
South of I-80?
South of I-80. And Brad Marshall can verify that I have that memorized correctly. But yes, so there is a list of them, including, again, those would also come when they are warranted. They, if the developer only builds 50,000 square feet or 100,000 square feet, it may not warrant some of those kind of traffic signal improvements. But certainly at some, the development has a phasing plan that discusses when the intersection of Alvo and Arbor will need to be redone, which is the most insignificant in terms of the cost.
Sure.
Thank you.
I had a question, Rachel, about DOT's recommendation of denial. And I just guess I wanted you to talk just a little bit about noise impacts and the rule we should give that consideration in this process.
Right. So the Department of Transportation had recommended denial of this. From their comments, I believe they are concerned about if there were additional lanes added to the interstate in the future, that that could create new noise impacts on the residential that's proposed and that perhaps they're concerned about noise impacts in general from the interstate. In this case, we don't actually have any regulations in place that would prevent the developer from coming forward with this plan. So we are not considering that here.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff right now? Okay, applicant. I just want to say before we get started, could you make this any more difficult?
Well, I think at the end of the day, Rachel will thank me for finally getting this off her desk. This has been, this has, well, first, good afternoon. Brad Marshall with Olson on behalf of Stonebridge Creek LLC. This has been a long time coming. Some of the history, about a year ago, a user came to the site and was very, very interested. And the owner proceeded in preparing application documents and everything to move forward very quickly. That was on the site plan, the large box user. That box user is no longer in the discussion. There is no imminent user as part of this development plan currently, but the applicant decided to move forward in preparing the land for development and getting all the agreements with the city in place that were going to be necessary anyway. So as Rachel did a great job of outlining everything, it's about 190 acres, PUD, R3 PUD. There is the underlying R3 that will cater very well to the single-family and the R5 apartment uses. There's three designated areas for apartments on the project. And as Rachel said, about 1,100 units of apartments and 50 single-family residences. The single-family residences are, and some of the waivers that were mentioned and discussed are consistent with what Stonebridge Creek to the west, the CUP is in size. And we are extending those that are right adjacent to those in size and nature. South of Humphrey, a little bit different. They're, they're again, more consistent with more larger lots that are south of Humphrey and Stonebridge Creek. So that was the intent to match what is currently being built out there for those residential areas. The B2 areas and B2 plus, originally the applicant had come forward and talked about H3 zoning on the property. And it was ultimately decided and negotiated on with Planning Department to add this B2 plus designation. And so we took some conditions or uses and asked them to be permitted or conditional uses. And that's how that, that B2 plus term got coined there. And some of that is, and being cognizant of the I-3 zoning, the property adjacent to the PUD area, that some of those uses may be more appropriate adjacent to that area. So Rachel talked about the comp plan amendment, the commercial center designation. This is a little bit larger than what is usually brought forward as a, or designated in the comp plan. We realize that. And the annexation, I think there will be enough discussion here as far as that is concerned with the county and city, but we are applying, the application does include about 119 acres to be brought into the city at the same time. We did, we've had several, because of the large user, we had several pre-app meetings with the staff. And we've continued those meetings as the plan has been, has progressed. I will mention, there was kind of a stop after our initial application. It was a little bit smaller than is currently shown. I had actually been here, what is it, about 18 months or so ago, on the Stonebridge Creek side where some of those residential uses are shown. And we had brought in, on that CUP had made an amendment. We decided, the applicant being on both sides of things, decided to bring in that area and kind of revert back to what it was. And so now that you're seeing what we had brought to you, but we never took to city council to finalize, we're bringing back those commercial uses. And I'll explain a little bit more detail of what that, what that includes. We also had meetings with HOA. We had meetings with Cook Investments, which is the I-3, and the Parrot Family Farms, which is adjacent to the west, just to make sure we're being good neighborly and at least letting them know what was being done. Pipeline planning area, we did have to plan around that a little bit, adjacent to Alvo. And so you see commercial uses on both sides of the street there to accommodate the pipeline. There was a significant traffic study. As far as traffic studies go, this is probably the largest one I had on the development side. There's different classifications. This was actually the highest classification because of the proximity to the interstate. So the, the study actually reached out to 14th and Alvo, 14th and Humphrey, excuse me, and went beyond, and we're talking about the south side of the interstate and the interchange intersections. So it was studied. Staff has reviewed that several times and we have amended it with larger area. And some, we worked through some of those improvements that were identified. There were some identified on the ramps, both east and westbound. I believe the eastbound was almost triggered immediately in the, in the plan without the usage of the development. And then the westbound, there, there was a designation for a signal primarily because of the left-turny movements and the growth of the city. And so it wasn't directly related to the development. And so it was not included in the annexation agreement as Steve had stated. The primary improvements, the realignment of Alvo Arbor was put in place several years ago, right away actually is designated. If you look at the property maps, you can see that curving more. So we've come up with a plan with roundabout being the primary intersection control to get Alvo and Arbor, which are both arterial roadway streets. And so we will utilize, at least that's the way annexation agreement reads right now, impact fees for those designations. There is one additional right turn lane at, it would be Alvo and Suturian, that it will be required at some point in the development that would also be impact fee reimbursable. The waivers, I did mention a couple with a lot, area lot width. We are asking for the apartments to have a 55-foot height allowance, which would be more, more than the zoning would allow, but is pretty consistent request these days for three and possibly four-story apartment buildings. There's a lot to talk about. There's a lot of things and I will mention a couple that probably, there is a Parks Trail located on the south side of Arbor, excuse me, Alvo Road that has been included in the development. And we've worked with Parks Department to locate and shown as an extension. And then also...
Can you point that out on the map?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. There is currently, I believe under construction or just completed, a trail system that comes up through the Stonebridge Creek and will come up to Alvo Road. There, within the development of the PUD, we've shown a trail to extend on the south side through the roundabout and extending to 27th Street. The area, if you were to look at an aerial image, the east side of the property is wide, vastly green space. Those are designated wetlands. We have been working with core engineers, Game Parks, Fish and Wildlife, for implementation of additional wetlands, wetland impacts that have been finding out on the property and mitigation areas. That area is also being utilized as detention. It had previously, before this application had been made, had been designated as areas of detention, so we were utilizing that and actually expanding it with this project. So we have engaged all those agencies and talked through the changes. There are, there are sailing wetlands, there are, there's critical habitat that we do have to be cognizant of, and there was, there was an original permit that allowed a lot of, some of the grading to actually be done prior to, prior to now, and some drainage structures to actually be built in there as well. So we're, as part of the overall drainage study, we're proposing to modify those, but again, we've been in contact with those agencies to get their blessings to move forward with that. I've got, might take this opportunity to answer some of the questions. This is relatively the north edge of the city corporate limits. Sanitary sewer will be brought up from the south edge and up to about the roundabout, which is about as far as sanitary can serve properties in this particular area. That will be done at the developer's expense. Those water mains, the city is actually under design for the 16-inch water main extension from Centurion to 27th Street, and that is being undertaken by the city as a, as more of a distribution main. And then everything else would be sized appropriately for commercial residential uses on the size of pipe, and that would be developer responsibility. One thing I do want to make sure that we do talk about is a very good question about industrial setbacks to the properties. Rachel outlined, there is a responsibility, the I3 property, under the current use permit to provide those setbacks. There is an existing private agreement between Stonebridge Creek LLC and Cook Investments. I'm not sure if it's actually Cook Investments, but the property owner there designates a shared setback between the two. So it's not as restrictive on one or the other, but we've taken that in consideration on this property now, and so you won't see any type of dwelling units within that designated area. We have not shown that on the plan purposely, just because it is a private agreement, and if that private agreement were ever changed, then we would have to actually come back to the city and get that changed as well. So I did want to address that comment. I think it's a good one because we could be creating a burden for existing buildings or expansion possibilities on that property.
And that would be on all three sides there around that industrial?
It is. We, we don't show residential as a north, and neither, neither our plan or the agreement had considered the north setback. Could I answer any other questions?
Yeah, oh yeah.
I'm sure I could.
Who wants to go first?
I can start. On your traffic study, did it include then as Arbor Road continued to 14th? And, I mean, we just talked about all those bridges being improved there on 14th.
On Arbor?
Yes, Arbor continues on. So Alvo comes around, Arbor goes straight and tees into 14th Street.
I think, I think the study did look at that intersection. There, there was nothing actually designated at that, that one. I remember specifically Humphrey being talked about a little bit, but they did, they did include it, so staff has seen those.
Okay.
Has seen that as part of the-
And no improvements are included outside the boundaries with this development for you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
What about the town center plans? Tell me a little bit about what your, what, what's, how that's developing.
That, that was a piece of the, piece of the plan that we included for that incentive criteria, as Rachel outlined. Very good questions again, how do you go from 850, if we don't build it, down to 700? The intent again was to include some of those H3 uses that a developer wanted to include. So we wanted to make sure that it was known that if we did something else and we did like, what specifically came up in this area of 27th and I-80 are auto dealerships. And so if that were to be proposed from the developer's side as a dealership, those are, those sort, take more land.
Sure.
And, and buildings are much smaller, so that criteria was, well, if we build a lot smaller building and then all of a sudden we had, we had more building space to go put elsewhere, just as, and so we lost that criteria, that incentive, and then ultimately the benefit, the benefit could go back to the developer to having more space. So that was something that we agreed to for that reduction of, for a reduction of overall floria for commercial.
But assuming that the town center kind of develops as envisioned with kind of a smaller, you know, walkable space.
Sure.
Are there plans to have that connected with the existing residential areas?
The trail is a good use, right there, the trail is, and we did hear that in the HOA meetings. It was the, at the time, well, why couldn't the box move where the town center is located and so forth? So if it was more pedestrian-friendly, there was a key driving force at the time with the box user as the location, and-
Sure.
And we still thought that we could still get across that, that commercial, the other commercial uses to get to a town center. And so we did look at, I mean, there will be also sidewalks and so forth running along Humphrey to get there as well.
Is that area just to the, kind of just to the west of the substation, that will be multifamily, is that correct?
Uh, let's see here.
So the, kind of, right, right there?
There's a substation here.
Correct, so just to the west of that, that initial area right there, is that?
This here?
Correct, right there.
Okay, yep, that is, there, there is a designation for residential, and then there's some office buildings down here adjacent to the commercial uses to the north, or I shouldn't say office, office commercial, wherever they may be. And as Rachel pointed out, we have a 20% requirement for office within the development for overall commercial spaces.
Thank you.
I, I did, I did gloss over one that I can't believe. I think I was talking so much that I just wanted to stop for a second, but there was this talk about the, the traffic calming. So there's a little bit of history here, again, going back to the CUP that was brought forward for Stonebridge Creek. There was a request at that time to include traffic calming, so we had come up with two concepts, one at the trail crossing, which is splitter island, and that would basically split the street, give somebody crossing the street an opportunity to stop in the center median and allow traffic to pass through, be a little safer, and, and then those splitter islands also slow traffic down as they're approaching, the lanes get narrower, and so that's the intent of increased safety there. The second one was also included just about 150 feet to the west of Centurion and Humphrey. And this is what we had drawn at the time. It's a little light in color, but basically we were proposing two new street connections to Humphrey in which there was a circle to be placed inside of this. This is a, this is a mechanism that the city has kind of adopted as something to help traffic calming. You're seeing them implemented in some newer developments, and so that they're not really, they're not a roundabout by any means, and they're not really a traffic circle or mini roundabout, but there's something there placed in the middle of an intersection for people to drive around and, and slow down. So we had agreed to that during that CUP amendment, and that was incorporated in the plan. The request, as I understand from LTU, is to add one either between the trail, well, from, from the trail to Quandary Road. And so it's a little vague for, for me to agree upon and to say what we're actually going to do. It's a, it is a longer stretch, and as you get into the commercial area, that is some of the reasons that we, we didn't keep a straight alignment. There actually was a plan developed that just kind of curved Humphrey into Alvo Road, but we've tried to take some curvature to the streets and, and make drivers actually move. There is a small roundabout right in the middle of the intersection of streets. So what the developer and applicant is agreeable to is to maintain that traffic circle or some other type of traffic calming within the development plan. We had actually originally asked for it to be removed with the change of uses. It's a little harder to place a circle where we had, where we had previously said, because we don't have residential lots here anymore. We have, we have B2 zoning here, and you may have multiple drives coming off. So to accurately or intentionally place that somewhere that will help a lot is a little bit more difficult with the plan that we have proposed. The extension does take it down to Quandary Road, so they do give us some flexibility to put it in there. My personal opinion, but we're willing to sit down with LTU and talk about the most appropriate location for this is somewhere and maybe at Quandary Road where you can start slowing traffic down a little bit. The gradients, Centurion actually sits at the highest point. It's, you're driving eastbound and you drive up to Centurion, and you're at the top of the hill, and then you start going down. To me, after you hit your first traffic calming device, you're going up gradient, you probably aren't going as, as fast as you may be if you were going down gradient. Cars and gravity just equal faster speeds. And so it may make sense to work with LTU, looking to the east. I will say, and being, maybe speaking on, with the I3 property and Cook Investments, and I know that they are here, if they want to speak about this, but they do have a lot of, their industrial use, they do have a lot of trucks, semi-truck traffic, and their primary, until a lot of these improvements come, their primary point of access is to come down Centurion, come into the development, into their, their buildings, drop off deliveries, and then exit and come back out. So we want, I mean, I, I want to be a little cognizant of, of the, the design and how that may impact existing facilities there. So I did have a motion to amend. I would just wanted to clarify one thing today, was that I wanted to make sure that since this was not a traffic control request from LTU, that we're not probably looking at Centurion and Humphrey. Centurion and Humphrey is a major, I wouldn't call it a major intersection, but it's a significant intersection, it's existing. The traffic study did include it as full build-out. It is a T-intersection, and would require stop control only. There would be other requirements according to the traffic impact study. So I did have a motion to amend for your consideration to add some language such that the trail crossing, excuse me, the traffic calming measure along Humphrey Avenue between the trail crossing and Quandary Road excludes the intersection of Centurion and Humphrey. So I do, I do agree with what Rachel had included as far as her motion to amend for, number one. She had worked with me on it, and I do appreciate her doing that. I just wanted to, as talking to her today and just getting a little bit more information from LTU, that we didn't, that we were a little bit more focused on the condition of it was being implemented on this PUD.
Can you help me out just a little bit? And when you showed the smaller map, can you point to that same intersection on this bigger map? I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Which intersection, sorry?
So-
The older, the older map, Brad, with the old residential, where's that intersection on this new site plan that you have?
That's a really good question. That intersection would sit approximately right here.
Okay.
So there, under the, the plan, there would have been a circle before Centurion if you were eastbound.
So it's not exactly at Centurion and Humphrey, it's?
Correct. We had, under the old plan, as you saw, there were street connections. It made sense because you were going to have two streets, one on the south, one on the north, you had something to add into the middle that would help traffic calming along Humphrey. It is a wider street. It was built more for industrial uses as the, the properties are currently, some additional to the north or even zone I3 today. So it, it's a wide street, and we'll continue to work with LTU to come, come up with a solution to, to meet their concerns.
Can you do me a favor and just kind of go through this map and like point at each thing and tell me kind of what, I mean, I know most of it, but, and just tell me what you're planning on there, just so I make sure I'm on the same page?
Absolutely. And I don't know if this would help, I mean, with kind of the overlay with the zoning.
Sure.
Here. These are single-family and R3 on the south side, as, as well as adjacent to, there's apartment R5 use here, which we thought was a little bit more appropriate to the R, the I3.
There's little things in there, are, so how many apartment buildings are going to be in that R5 section there?
And that one?
Yeah, I think there's 13 buildings shown there.
242 units is the density that would be allowed.
Okay, so those little things are apartment buildings?
They are.
So like a whole bunch of-
Just the concept, yeah.
Yeah, under concept, those are, yeah, a little bit bigger footprint, two-story buildings that we do quite often around town.
Okay. Now tell me about the B2 that's, nope.
Oh.
Nope.
Here.
Yeah.
So this area actually is the, the area that we brought back in, we added to this PUD application. It's currently zoned B2, and so we're just, we're including it so that it's inclusive into some plan.
And so, kind of on the south end, those are going to be residences?
Correct.
But then as you kind of go north, those get more into commercial uses? Yeah, right in there?
Yes.
Or are those still, okay?
Yep, and you maybe can see that a little bit more clearly on this plan. These will be, these will be single-family or, single-family attached or detached lots that will be consistent with what is in Stonebridge and across from it. We are not changing the, the particular use as today, but bringing it into the PUD as a B2 commercial area. And yet, under concept, you know, good uses to, to move from residential, maybe daycares and, and-
And so the height waiver is only on the R5, so would not be on this particular section right here?
Correct. There's, there's R5 here that would have the height waiver included, which is adjacent to the I3. And then this is the closest to any existing residential. And you'll notice, there's a couple, there's a pretty wide area here. You know, it, it, this is, this is 150, 200 feet back, and the reason being is Centurion, again, goes, goes really, gives up gradient pretty quickly. And the reason being is Centurion again goes, goes really, gives up gradient pretty quickly. And so this, these apartments sit below the road quite considerably, actually. So even with the height waiver, there's going to be considerable amount of buffer between the residences.
So kind of a big apartment complex there?
Yep.
And then to the north is more like just general commercial?
Then you get into the bulk of the commercial area here.
So right now you're kind of planning on office spaces there next to, what was that, Quandary? Road?
From a planning perspective, I keep saying office because it's probably what...
Yeah, I know, it's commercial.
Yeah, but it could be, it could be any kind of commercial use.
And then to the north of Quandary Road, then that's where you're outlining a big box type store?
Correct.
And then if you keep going north, then that's your town center?
Mm-hmm.
Now how about across the road there?
These would be supporting pads, retail pads that, in the comp plan, are good. They help support that commercial center. That's why we included them as part of this and they could be anything within those designated uses or additional uses.
A fast food restaurant?
Fast food restaurants, hotels, some of those other uses that you have seen pop up on the south side of the interstate.
And then how about on the other side of Alva Road then?
So we have two designated areas. The road actually splits, the road actually splits the designation of the zoning. The south side would be B2 and there's be more commercial uses and then R5 pocket in the northwest corner.
So another kind of big apartment complex there in that little triangle?
Yes.
And then more commercial in that little narrow swath?
Mm-hmm. And again, we added that primarily because of the PPA and so we didn't have any dwelling units on the north side of the road. If it wasn't there, it'd probably be a really good transitional piece from the commercial, but we're trying to accommodate that.
So no B5? That was just a typo. I have questions about, I know you asked for a waiver on the, like the centerline radius that's kind of over in that R3 section in the south. Can you just tell me a little bit why the radius can't be met there?
A hundred and fifty foot is your standard radius. As we looked at that area and we wanted to provide a different, we wanted to try to provide some density between us and the I3. And so as we're getting the lots configured, they're, again, probably very, very consistent with what is just to the west in Stonebridge Creek. And so we tried to match those designation and sizes and that created one big kind of loop roadway and the radiuses just worked a little bit better with a hundred, I think it was a hundred twenty-five, actually.
Yeah.
So a slight reduction.
Tom, go for it.
Brad, you mentioned in your letter that the developer would prefer final approval of building materials?
Yes, I did.
Maybe I've missed it. Is that still being requested by city staff? Are you still opposing?
I think we agreed to the ones that are in here.
Okay.
For brick materials or the percentages. So those have been added, those have been added, so we have agreed to what's on the plan.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions right now for the applicant?
No. Could we take a break?
Yes. Can we take, let's take a 10-minute break before we have, are you the only person testifying on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's take a little break before we do testimony and support. 10 minutes.
Do I need to submit this as a motion to amend?
Oh, yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, testimony in support of this application. Testimony in support. And this is for all three applications before us. Okay, I don't see any, so I'm going to testimony in opposition. And this again would be for all three applications.
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Ackley with the Coley-Jesson Law Firm, 1125 South 124th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. We represent Cook Investments, which if we could get the overhead on. Mr. Marshall talked about them briefly. They are the property immediately to the east of where the apartments are proposed. And of course, he does have a great interest in protecting the investment that they've made there over the years. He currently has a business worth about 4.9 million on your tax rolls, brings in about $120,000 a year in real estate taxes, he's got 15 employees, and again, he's been there for over 15 years. Part of what brought us into the discussion with all of this is when we discovered back in January, February, the initial designs and plans that were being submitted, there were a lot of residential areas going next door, which violated the private agreement, as Mr. Marshall referenced in his comments. So, when this was initially going through, we contacted Rachel Jones. Again, hopefully, all of you have this as part of your package. I don't know if you can shrink that up, or if I can shrink that up. There we go, thank you. We had sent the letter just to make the planning department aware of the private agreements that are there in terms of what can and can't be developed around the boundaries of this property. And as part of that, we had requested that this letter be included in the packages that go out to the Planning Commission and City Council, so I did not see that in your packages. I don't know if you guys have received this or not, but we did make that request, and if it's not part of your packages, I'd be happy to get copies of this for you. Anyway, as part of the private agreement, the development around this site is not supposed to violate the 300-foot permit issue that we have. Again, Ms. Jones referenced that during her comments. If you look in the staff report, and you go to page eight, it's item number 12, talks about "A portion of the new multifamily area would be across Humphrey Avenue from existing I-3 industrial zoning under use permit number 139A. Established policy in the comprehensive plan recommends against new residential uses within 300 feet of industrial zoning. Use permit 139A prohibits the storage or use of hazardous material within 300 feet of residential dwelling, which protects future housing." Well, what she's failing to say is it does not protect the current industry that you have sitting there. This was all designed for industrial zoning. Again, we've got private agreements to protect the 300-foot buffer. Unfortunately, the planning department does not seem concerned about maintaining the business that's there, and instead, they reference that, hey, this allows you to put in residential because it just cancels our permit. Again, we've got private agreements which will not permit that, and we wish that, I guess, the city would also recognize the private agreement. Mr. Marshall referenced, he did not want to put anything in the plans. With regard to that, we would request if this does go forward, something do get put in the plans, because we do have a private agreement. They've acknowledged it. Part of the plan that changed, by the way, between January, February timeframe and now, they previously had residential here on this outlot B. That's part of the agreement between us, that they should not have residential there. There was also plans to have residential closer to where Humphrey is. Again, part of our private agreement is you can't have it within 300 feet, because we don't want you screwing up our industrial permit. And then on the north, the I-3 zoning for the 20 acres to the north should also stay, because again, this was initially developed as an industrial area, and with all the outlots you have there, in terms of what I'd call wasted area perhaps, otherwise in a development, that's a great place for industrial to continue coming in. And again, it would be natural, you'd have two industrial sites sitting next to each other. So, we oppose, I guess, the apartments going in, and for the reasons noted in the staff report. Your comprehensive plan, I'm just reading the notes from the report, recommends against new resident uses within 300 feet of industrial zoning. And you are directly putting residential use next door to industrial zoning. Appreciate they're trying to set it off a little bit to respect the 300 feet, even though they don't want to recognize the agreement in the documents, but you are putting residential next to industrial, which is rare. One of the things you could do, if you wanted to flip the big box in the apartments around, you know, again, I don't know if big boxes are ever going to come to this area, but putting commercial, which has trucks and traffic delivering things, would be a much more similar use to the trucks and traffic that comes in to the dual dynamic property. The semis that come in there are 53 feet generally in length, a number of them, probably half, we don't have a direct count, half will come from the south to enter the property, the other half come from the north down Centurion, and then up across into Humphrey. So again, the other thing we want to object to is the discussion with regard to traffic calming devices. We have got to get 53-foot semis in and out of an existing business that you have there, which again, was designed for an industrial park. Appreciate that there's maybe ways to do some traffic calming in other areas of the development, but the current roads leading to this I-3, we would discourage any kind of devices that were just discussed. During your break, we did discuss with the applicant, perhaps one measure for traffic calming, instead of doing these little circles, roundabouts, would be to do three stripes on the road. In other words, again, people coming down the hill are going to be able to see, we've got three different areas for drivers to come, they're going to realize they maybe need to slow down and pick, and it would also allow your truck traffic coming in and out of the I-3 area, to again, have a lane to themselves. So, there are other alternatives out there, but the traffic calming device is being recommended anywhere along Centurion, anywhere along Humphrey and going south, we would be opposed to those because of the existing I-3 and the amount of truck traffic that currently uses that. In terms of the recommendations before you today, again, you've got comprehensive plan change, which would be, we would be opposed, to the extent it deals with the apartments next to I-3. The zoning change, again, we would oppose the portion of it which gets you residential next to I-3. As the applicant themselves have indicated, this is a huge PUD. You normally don't see something of this scale. And I guess one suggestion would be, and I appreciate they're maybe trying to master-plan this, but to my knowledge, there's no buyers lined up, it's just a speculative, a speculative site plan with zoning changes and the comprehensive plan changes. Why don't you take a chunk of this at a time and start on the north side, and see if you can get some impetus there? But as it currently stands, the design with I-3 there, and again, this was initially designed for an I-3 corridor, just doesn't work for the current business that's located there. Final item I would reference, again, one of the other comments that's in the staff report, is that your Nebraska Transportation also opposed the plan. Again, part of the initial zoning for this area is because of I-80 there, and again, the noise factor with residential area, this is perfect for industrial uses, certainly commercial uses, but putting the residential close to I-80 is a problem, and you're in Nebraska State, recognize that and oppose the plan, and appreciate again, Ms. Jones and her staff said, well, we don't have anything that restricts it, so we're going to go ahead and do it. So, based on all of that, and I see my time is short, we have several requests. One is, again, opposing the comp plan change, to the extent it puts the residential right next to I-3. Second is opposing the zoning change, to the extent it puts the residential next to I-3. We're not opposing the entire PUD, but the southern portion next to the I-3 is problematic. Also, we would like to oppose any traffic calming devices that would interfere with access to and from Cook Investments and that dual dynamic business site. And then we also need our private agreement, referenced of record, there's no reason not to do that. I believe Mr. Marshall said it just makes it cumbersome that if we ever change our private agreement, we'd have to come back to the city. I would respectfully disagree to that. You have plats that have dedicated easements all the time, easements can change without going back through Planning Commission or City Council action. Same would be true with the private agreement, which, by the way, we haven't changed it in 14 years. I don't anticipate we're going to change that coming up, because we need it to maintain our business in this location. So, thank you for your, for your listening today and your service.
How would, how would you and your client feel if we required them to have the 300-foot buffer, you know, on their side of the property? Would that alleviate some of your concerns about infringing upon your industrial zoning?
Well, the bigger picture, I think, for you as a planning commission, is whether you want residential next to industrial zoning. I mean, the report itself says that your comprehensive plan, and it's item, item number 12 there, within the package, it's on page eight, but it says, "Established policy in the comprehensive plan recommends against new residential uses within 300 feet of industrial zoning."
And we've had, the reason why I ask is we've had the situation come up before, so if we, if we put in the 300-foot buffer, would that alleviate your concerns?
You know, with the proper, proper design of what's going to happen on Humphrey, I guess my answer would be, it would depend. You know, to the extent you'd have on-street parking allowed with apartment buildings there, that's going to be a problem, again, with trucks getting in and out. Any truck that's coming out of an industrial lot, you don't just easily go into the lane you want to go to, they've got to pull out and swing around, and they're 53 feet long, most of them. So, not having parking on the west side or the east side of Humphrey would be requested if you were to pursue something like that. 300 feet certainly would be a requirement or a request. Again, the traffic calming piece of it, Ms. Core, is part of what we would be concerned with as well. I know there's been a lot of discussion, both from Planning Department and Mr. Marshall, that these are things that were requested, or that are things that are being discussed. Seems to not have any specificity, other than we might put one in this area, and we might put one in this area. Again, we've got to protect the ability to get 53-foot-long semis in and out of an existing business that you've had in your community for the last 14 years. So, if we can come up with a plan on Humphrey, and to your point, to allow apartments to the west, if it becomes your decision that it's a good mix to have residential use next to industrial use, somehow, we've got to make sure that Humphrey remains a clear area to get trucks in and out of, without interfering with where your apartment folks are going to be coming in and out as well. Because I believe that's the concern policy-wise, as to why you normally don't mix those two together.
Any other questions for the testimony? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I would request today, maybe the number of inputs you're hearing, and the proposed amendment that you're hearing, and our opposition with maybe some suggestions on other things that should be done, maybe this is an item that should be held over, as opposed to trying to take an action and come up with amendments that somehow put a Band-Aid on everything today. This is an important area to get master-planned, and I appreciate that they're trying to do this huge PUD, but you are going to have a direct impact to an existing industrial business. Obviously, that's my client's concern. As a city, I think you want to get it right. Again, they've proposed some prior plans, they've pulled them, this is what they're putting out there now, the discussion today, we haven't really figured out traffic calming, well, maybe we might do this. I'm raising issues to you now that you're hearing for the first time with regard to mixing industrial with residential and the traffic calming issues. Maybe the best thing would be to hold it over and think through some of these things, but again, I defer to you and appreciate all your efforts for the volunteer service that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Further testimony in opposition?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, 444 Cherry Creek Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. So, you know, as an engineer, you're always aware that there may become these awkward moments in life, such as, you're a private company, and you spent, you own a private engineering company, you spent 10 years of your life planning and amending plats for a subdivision called Stonebridge Creek. And then, I handed it over to Mr. Marshall. And now, as county engineer, I'm in a position where sadly, I need to come forward and, and be against this annexation. And so, for a number of years, it has been brought to my attention that it has been practiced in the city, such as this location on Fletcher Avenue in between 84th and 98th Street, where you may notice a bridge, this is the city boundary, the other side is the county boundary. I often refer to this as the two-thirds bridge. It's two-thirds the city, it's one-third mine. It was damaged in the 2015 flood. I have been asking to do a joint project for embankment stabilization there, and we have argued back and forth about how to do that project now for four years. What is sad to me is, the public doesn't care whether it's two-thirds the city's and one-third mine. I'm inspecting it, I'm actually treating the bridge as if it were mine, it's not technically all the way mine. It creates a very difficult situation from a planning standpoint. In addition, there's the bridge at Havelock Avenue, in between 84th and 98th Street, by the event center. You'll note the city boundary. It's interesting, the city boundary follows the creek, and then, and then, very coincidentally, kind of darts over, and just happens to miss the bridge. This bridge was clearly annexed around. Again, this is a bridge, it was critically damaged in the 2015 flood, we have done substantial embankment work to stabilize this bridge. Okay, so, I realize these two bridges aren't awesome, and of course, now I'm in the business of giving away infrastructure, infrastructure that's not such a great present. So, as we move forward now, we have the bridge located, I think I got a, I got north to the wrong way there, sorry, actually, just to the east of 27th and Arbor. So, there's statements in the staff report on page eight and nine that say, well, the county engineer really wanted the city to take the bridge, but the city doesn't want to take the bridge, but hey, we took the intersection. And technically, according to statute, 18-1716.01, annexation, property continues to or abutting a county road. Any city or village annexing a property continuous to or abutting upon any part of a county road shall be deemed to have been annexed. Without further action, all of the contiguous or abutting road at that time of such an annexation, except that this section shall not apply to county roads separating counties. So, the annexation boundary presented in your package is not right. In fact, the initial annexation boundary that was proposed, annexed again about two-thirds of a bridge. So, I posed the question to Lincoln Transportation Utilities, to planning, to Mr. Marshall, and I even discussed the question with Lincoln Federal. This issue is not Lincoln Federal or developer's issue, by any stretch of the imagination, but just an issue of doing the right thing. So, we obviously have one bridge that's been annexed around, that should clearly belong to the city. We have another bridge that two-thirds has been annexed, now it's not being maintained. And here we have a 1965 bridge, it's not in awesome condition, I'm not going to lie. So far, it hasn't required a lot of maintenance in the last several years, but it, it's also reached its useful life. And yet, if this proceeds forward, by my reading of the statute, and by the opinion I've received from Lancaster County Attorney's Office, at least two-thirds of it would be automatically annexed in. What I'm proposing is that, is that we go ahead and annex in the bridge in its entirety, and modify this annexation boundary. Now, of course, as an engineer, I've inappropriately shuffled my papers, so I'll just hold on a second here. And we would actually like to offer from county engineering, so that this misunderstanding would, would not affect the private developer's cost or project, a legal description of an annexation boundary. And again, annexing the bridge in its entirety. As it stands now, regardless of the shape, because the south end would be annexed into the county, the, or annexed into the city, the line where I have laid my pen would also be considered contiguous to that, and therefore, without further action, annexed in to the city. And so, what I'm asking is, is that we have a plan, because that's what we're here supposed to do, making the right decisions at the right times, and that this bridge be annexed in its entirety into the city. I realize that this also may not be a decision that can be made today. If this goes forward, I do believe that the city will still be responsible, regardless of the annexation boundary, for two-thirds of the bridge.
Any questions for Pam? Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition? Okay, staff?
Steve Anderson with the Planning Department. We'll start with the last one and work our way back. So, let's start with some of the prior examples that were given. Don't like to disagree with other departments at any one time, and we, going back to last January, knew that we had a difference of opinions between the city and the county on this one. So, it was a difference of opinion in terms of, we didn't want to annex half of the bridge. Don't think that's a good idea to annex half the bridge. Legally, and I'll explain this in a moment, we're not required to annex the bridge. We also talked with the city attorney, and the city attorney is here, if you'd like to get into more details, but let's start with some of the examples. And I got to point out, I think it was noted, that somehow, the city didn't do what was right at this location. This is 84th and Havelock. Don't agree with that in the slightest. What you have here in the red boundary is the property that the annex, that was annexed. That is the property, so this is lot 50, that was in the annexation as proposed by the Ag Society.
Can you maybe, and focus in, zoom in?
I'll try, we'll see, and there we go, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's better.
That's much better. So, what you see is that this little part that was not annexed, don't know why it was not annexed, it's a separate legal lot, so we went straight north, we annexed the right-of-way that was adjacent to the land that was being annexed. What we, this land to the south, it might have annexed part of the bridge, wasn't part of the annexation request, so we didn't annex what was adjacent to it. No gerrymandering, no trying to move around things.
Is that the end of the bridge there, where the annexation happened, or is this one of those that's partial?
This was the one that was noted, that the bridge itself here is not in the, most of the bridge here is not in the city limits. I think the comment was, is that, oh, we should have really annexed up this way, we gerrymandered and went back this way. And all I was trying to point out is, no, this was the area that was actually annexed in red, we went straight north from that area that was annexed in red.
Understand that, but I want to know where the bridge ends. Does it end at that mark right there, or is that? Like that white mark?
Oh, this white line is the city limits, this is generally the bridge, maybe it goes a little bit beyond, but this is generally the bridge, this is the city limits. So, in this particular circumstance on Havelock Avenue, the bridge is not in the city limits, and as far as I can tell from this example, it's not part in or part out. The other one, looks like it was part in, part out. Again, we just annexed what was adjacent to it. I don't think anybody noticed that we were annexing part of a bridge on the other example on Fletcher. I would agree, it's not a good example to annex part of a bridge. Doesn't make any sense, and I think in all circumstances, we would try to avoid that. Any other questions on this one on Havelock Avenue? We are quite aware of state statutes, they're brought up all the time in terms of annexations. And matter of fact, it's interesting and completely unrelated matter, we had somebody calling us today, asking, why didn't we annex the state highway on Highway 34 when we annexed land that was adjacent? And we went through the state statutes and pointed out that the state statutes reference county right-of-way, they don't reference state highways. So, we are, we have known for decades that we need to annex, by state statutes, the adjacent county right-of-way when we annex the adjacent land. All we're simply trying to point out here is this land here and this land here, this is the land that is being-
You might want to zoom out a little bit.
Okay.
Sorry, because we didn't see where you were pointing.
These lots here are the ones that are being annexed. This part of the right-of-way was already previously annexed, it's not being annexed at this point. And actually, it was this definitive line at that point, years ago, that was trying to include this right-of-way, future right-of-way in the city limits. So, what is required is this area here in blue, it is immediately adjacent to the land that is annexed. The intersection is not immediately adjacent to the land, in this catty corner, to the land. And so, rather than annexing the right-of-way that is adjacent to the right-of-way that we are annexing, we don't think that's what the state statutes require. The state statutes require that when you're annexing this land, you annex the land that is abutting to it, the right-of-way, excuse me, the county right-of-way. And so, this is the county right-of-way that we're proposing to annex. We reviewed it with the city attorney's office, and they agree, and Tim C. is here, if you want to go into it further. What we offered is that, rather than having both Alve, excuse me, Arbor and having 27th in the city limits, but the intersection not in the city limits, that didn't make much sense, that we would go ahead and annex, add to the annexation area, the intersection. That way, the intersection is clearly inside of the city limits. But the bridge, the bridge remains in the county. Someday, if we annex further land to the east, we might annex this bridge, we might annex other bridges as we go forward with growing in the future. We're going to be annexing land on South 40th, for example, south of South Rokeby Road, we'll be annexing other county roads in that area. With every annexation, there's often some type of a county road. So, respectfully, this is a point of disagreement, I don't think it's something that needs to hold up this application. As Brad Marshall pointed out, he's the applicant, he doesn't have a dog in this disagreement between the city and the county. This is just the city and the county disagreeing in terms of who should be in charge of the bridge. We don't think the bridge, the annexation should come up and annex some portion of it, we don't think we're actually required to annex any portion of it.
Steve, how did staff decide how far to the east to annex? Is that just the right-of-way?
This is the edge of the right-of-way line on the east, so we are annexing all of the adjacent right-of-way. So we are annexing all of the adjacent right-of-way.
Steve, is there a city park to the north of this site?
To the north of the site, there are some saline wetlands that I believe the city of Lincoln has preserved and has ownership of, but is not inside the city limits.
Other questions for Steve on this particular issue?
If anything else on this particular issue, then we can go over to the use permit issue.
I just have a quick question. So when an intersection jogs, is there any language that deals with the jogging intersection?
The state statutes just simply point out, as Pam pointed out, that when you annex adjacent land, you need to annex the adjacent county right-of-way. And so, that's what we think we are doing in this case. I think it, I had not realized that the county attorney had rendered an opinion on this. I think it'd probably be a good thing between now and when this is at the city council, we get everyone together, and we can discuss this further.
Steve, can you talk to me as to why 27th Street, when it deadens at Arbor, is four-lane? What kind of traffic are you anticipating here?
How it is, why it is four lanes today, I mean, certainly the traffic study was looking at the future traffic volumes. I don't have whether the volume is shown on this particular intersection.
And then, you know, let's say, down the road, this gets built out to what could be a substantial development, and something were to happen with that bridge, and the county engineer, whoever it be at that time, decided not to fix that bridge, but would rather close it, maybe due to funding, for example.
Sure.
The city planning would be fine with that?
Well, I think that would be something between the city, Lincoln Transportation Utilities, and the county engineer on any bridge, not just this bridge. If for some reason a bridge was, is closing, and we certainly understand, as county engineer made a very good presentation earlier about facing a lot of funding issues.
Sure.
We would want to work with the county engineer to see if there's anything that could be worked out between the city and the county. And I think that spirit of cooperation exists on all throughout the city and the county, except this one little point where we have a little bit of disagreement.
Sure.
But of course, as you know, we just city passed a sales tax, because the city also has funding issues in terms of maintaining streets and building new streets as well. And so both the city and the county are facing struggles financially as well.
Sure. But that being said, if that bridge were closed, that wouldn't, you wouldn't worry about that access point at all?
Oh, no, I can't say that at all. It might be quite important to have that bridge open to traffic in the future.
Is it important because of this development, or is it important in general? Or is it more important because of this development?
Well, I said it might be important. You're asking a good hypothetical question. I'm saying that this, as a spur of the moment, as I'm standing here, I think we'd want to look at the bigger picture in terms of, is traffic using Arbor Road to go over, for instance, to Highway 77? We have commercial development at Highway 77, and maybe that, continuing that link on Arbor is important just for general traffic flow throughout the city as well.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Proceed to the use permit?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm taking this question, because this question goes way back 14-plus years ago, and Rachel wasn't in the office 14-plus years ago, but I was. And so, I thought I'd try to give you some background, that the attorney representing Cook Properties, I think we need to make sure we have all the facts correct. So this is use permit 139, and it's showing right here in the middle is the Cook property. And at one point, this I-3 boundary has shifted over time. As I mentioned when the question was asked about the floor area, initially, the idea here was, I-3 is an employment center. This is along the interstate. It's a very visible interchange. This particular property is very visible from the interstate. We thought it would be a good site for light industrial development. That's kind of what the I-3 is about. And Cook Properties was the first investor in this area, and that's great. They've made a very substantial investment in this. It was one part of the property, though, that was owned by a different developer at the time, who wanted to develop all of the property around it. And so, around it was shown some, commercial was also shown some residential. So, an amendment came through, and this was now use permit 139. This goes back to 2005, which is 14 years ago. And actually, at that time, when this use permit was done, the property that is adjacent actually went through the rezoning to R-3 at that time. As you can see, it's labeled I-3 to R-3, and I pulled up the ordinance to make sure that was approved, and it was. So in 2005, 14 years ago, the adjacent land, let's call it to the south, was rezoned from I-3 to R-3. And this use permit, showing that next door was going to be residential, it included then, the restriction on that property, that that property, in terms of storage and use of hazardous materials, and I may go into a long definition as to what does that mean, that any use within the use permit shall not be allowed within 300 feet of a residential dwelling. So as was noted in the staff report, the 300-foot setback is inside the I-3 area today, and that is why there is not a 300-foot setback shown outside of the I-3 zoning, because that 300-foot setback is within the remaining I-3 zoning, and has been within that remaining I-3 zoning since 2005. That, what was, now, if there's a separate private agreement between two parties, just the same way as if they're private covenants in a neighborhood association, we're not a party to those private ones. So what we were just simply pointing out is, that that use permit still has that restriction. Now, the restriction was for the use and storage of hazardous chemicals. It doesn't mean that that 300-foot area, as it falls on the I-3 property, renders it useless. As we've had in many other ones, you can do parking, you could do office space, you could do a lot of other things. You could do your loading docks, you could do your circulation, you can do an awful lot of things, including your setbacks, green space setbacks, all within that 300 feet. And actually, in this particular case, part of the I-3 was a 300-foot setback to residential dwelling. And so, that gives you-
We can't see where you're pointing.
Sorry. Thank you for keeping me on task here. So for instance, Humphrey Avenue can be a part of that 300-foot spacing to a residential dwelling. So, as was noted, we don't think this impacts the existing business. The existing business was built with the idea that it was going to have that 300-foot setback. This 300-foot setback has been a part of this use permit. The adjacent property was rezoned to residential. And particularly going to the point of the Nebraska Department of Transportation, that also then goes to the comp plan amendment. Let's see, did I get it right that time? So here is the I-3 area that is outside of your PUD and is remaining I-3. The adjacent land is not part of the comp plan amendment, because it's already shown as urban residential. So what the Nebraska Department of Transportation was objecting to is this land. They didn't object to the commercial and the industrial. They objected to this land, which is already in our comp plan for residential use, and has been in our comp plan for residential use for, I would guess, 10-plus years, because the zoning has been in place for at least 14 years. I would also note that this residential is also in much closer proximity to the neighborhood. And so, the neighborhood was looking at this plan, and people were buying their houses, it was with the idea that this area was going to be residential, not that it was going to be commercial. I mean, we, again, are certainly sensitive to, yes, people, when you're living close to the interstate, there may be some noise impacts. And the people who are buying houses in this area, or in this case, it's part apartments or part houses, they're going to have some understanding that they are moving into an area that the interstate is already there and may move closer to them. It's very difficult in a community to try to completely align the interstate with residential uses from one end of town to the other end of town. So you do end up in places, particularly here, where you're not next to 14th Street and you're not next to 27th Street, to try to see that you're going to force some commercial development to go there, particularly when it moves it closer to the neighborhood.
Steve, can you tell me what that light green by the purple is? What that represents?
This area here?
Yeah.
That was simply representing at that time that this is an entryway into Lincoln, and we're hoping as part of the development of the I-3 property, that there'd be some buffer, some entryway landscaping given as a part of it. It's a comp plan representation in terms of trying to have some green space. We have the same thing along Highway 2. It's a representative idea, there's to try to be some green space. It probably at one point went along further, but with the residential was removed. I would also note, and Bob Summerring with LTU can go into this further, about the whole traffic calming, but I would note, certainly, in other parts of town, we have roundabouts that trucks can go through. So this would not, we certainly, that is a design criteria, as Bob can address. Not to say that this location is fixed and set, that that's the best place to do a roundabout, or that's the best measure. That's why LTU was hoping to work with the applicant on trying to find what is the best measure. As we heard from the neighborhood meetings that were held in this area, that was one of the concerns of the neighborhood, was trying to slow traffic down on Humphrey. They appreciated that where this trail crossing is, is going to have some traffic calming that is being done by the developer. That's certainly very welcome. There is a roundabout further to the west on Humphrey. We just think some additional measure might be helpful, particularly as you're heading into the residential area.
Could a traffic calming device be something like a speed bump?
I will let LTU talk about what type of traffic calming devices they think are appropriate.
Before Bob starts, as long as you're up, Steve. So, the motion to amend from Brad excludes the last part of the sentence, "to the satisfaction of Transportation Utilities," Department LTU. You wouldn't, are you for removing that, or against removing that?
That's a better question for Bob as well.
Bob Summerring, Lincoln Transportation Utilities. I think if you leave that statement in there, you have an agency that's going to look out for the truck traffic, look out for the nearly 1,200 residential units there. I think that's a critical part of the statement.
Okay. Thank you.
But otherwise, as far as the amendment goes, you're okay with, you know, excluding the intersection of Centurion Drive and Humphrey?
We weren't requiring that it be at that point.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Bob, for traffic calming measures, does the city of Lincoln have any standards?
We have several different systems that have been used. Some of them are not written in the standards. We do not use speed bumps.
Sure. You know, this is, in my short time on the commission, traffic calming measures have come before us numerous times, and something that's continuously mentioned is a lack of standard when it comes to city of Lincoln calming measures. Is that something that the department is working toward?
Actually, yes, it is. We've had some meetings with some of the development engineers, and that was one of their concerns, is they want to know, like, the spacing, the type of product that would be used, things like that. So we are working on that.
Thank you, Bob.
So besides a roundabout, then, what other acceptable, can you throw some examples?
Well, the median, like they're putting down at the trail, something like that. There are places where they just taper the street and make it narrower. There are speed tables, which are like elongated speed bumps, things of that nature.
Or like bumping out? I know they've done that in other parts of the city. Okay. Is there on-street parking on Humphrey?
Here?
Yeah.
I think this, I think it could be, yes. And I think that's something in the process of looking out for the existing uses, we need to take that into account for whatever's done on that section of Humphrey.
Okay, because I know they were mentioning it's a pretty wide street, so I didn't know if there was on-street parking already on there, or if that was going to go away with this proposal.
Legally, right now, people could park on the street.
Any other questions for Bob right now? Other questions for other staff? Okay. Are we ready for applicant rebuttal? All right.
Thank you again. Steve did a good job. He did a great job pointing out a couple of things I wanted to bring up, particularly use permit 139, that was approved in 2005. There was an additional, if we had that plan adjacent to the Cook Investments property, there was a Stonebridge Creek Villas, it was also approved at the same time. So, we're going back and looking at what was approved, and concern of residential adjacent to the industrial uses, I do believe that was certainly contemplated back at the time, and even the private agreement does contemplate it in this particular area. And so, if there were any type of requirement to put the 300-foot onto us, I do believe that would be in direct conflict with that use permit requirements. And I just wanted to reiterate that. The, and Steve's comment also, one thing to consider with this, it is in the comp plan, but from a gradient perspective, the site sits really low from the interstate. There's actually retaining walls in the property that hold back and allow that property be lower from the property. So, I can't say for certain, but I do recall some studies being done by the state. In this corridor, it wasn't as upfront as is today, and, but there were no traffic calming. Humphrey, again, was a straight road as planned. It was going to industrial properties. Now, we're proposing it to go to commercial, and, but we have agreed to install some. And what I'm just asking pretty much is, let's decide what that traffic calming really is and where it is. We do want to be cognizant of the truck traffic. We're proposing commercials, so pretty much you're going to have it about anywhere along Humphrey. But what we, and I speak on behalf of the applicant here, is what we don't want to get into consideration is full-blown roundabouts. And roundabouts, as my understanding from LTU's position on this, was not really the intent to provide that traffic control from an intersection improvement, but rather than a safety issue and slowing traffic down. And we're very agreeable to that, as to where that is, is just not where we are quite yet with LTU. The comment of striking "to the satisfaction of" has kind of always been very ambiguous, very, gives them, from a conditional perspective, them to lean on anything that they want. And that roundabout is certainly in the back of my mind, where, in this condition like this, from a development perspective, they're not going to be impact-free and reimbursable, there are going to be a full cost of the development on this. That certainly hasn't been contemplated up until just very shortly when the staff report came out.
So, prior to the staff report coming out, you had not had a discussion with the city in regards to a calming mechanism?
We had discussed it. We had agreed to carry over the traffic calming for the trails.
Okay.
And we had made position, our position clear, that we were eliminating the second one, because we were eliminating the connecting streets. But it just wasn't-
So there had been a discussion of a second measure at some point, but nothing had been agreed to?
On the CUP, on the CUP for Stonebridge Creek, we had to. And so that's why we're taking that extension of the second one and trying to implement it here. We just don't have any specifics on it.
Brad, would it make you feel better if we put in there something about excluding a full-blown roundabout?
It may, and that's why I think if you take that out from the intersection of Centurion and Humphrey, is my intent for the motion to amend was, pretty much, would alleviate my concern on that. But to answer you, yes, taking something out from intersection control would help alleviate some concerns here. I think we're open to discussions with LTU, as if it's another splitter island, or if it's a little center circle, something that we can make sure that would be conducive to the area and the truck traffic that are going to be going by there. At break, I was talking to Scott Cook and his attorney. To me, it makes a lot of sense to put it at the bottom of the hill. I know the condition says, between the extents of the trail and Quandary, but Quandary, I haven't actually presented that to- haven't actually presented that to LTU as a potential, but that may make more sense to me as to that location and what that looks like.
Brad, remind me, what's driving the timing of this right now?
Besides, it's been out there a long time, nothing. It was, it was just time to move this forward. We've gotten everything taken care of. We had brought, we had brought the second piece in and addressed a lot of the comments up to this point and asked for it to proceed.
Thank you.
From the standpoint of the street parking with the change of zone, would your client be willing to keep it commercial along some of the main traffic ways out for the industrial Specifically, Centurion?
Can you, I'm not sure if I understood the question, actually.
Well, for example, in other developments where there's apartment complexes, there is parking on the roadway-
Yes.
-where the traffic is getting in and out of the development.
Right.
And so if that is a concern of the industrial site, is your client willing to, because, I mean, from what we just heard, it would be allowed to park on the street? And typically, you park on the street because you're walking up to your apartment. So would you be willing to keep commercial along the traffic way out specifically Centurion? Because that's the change from...
I think if I understood Cook Investments' concern primarily, there is truck traffic, well, maybe I should back up. The commercial-
And maybe I misunderstood, and that would be okay, too.
Let me just make sure we're talking about the same thing. I only got my-
Yeah, there's a lot of maps, isn't there?
Yeah, there is. This is colored, but it will do. So-
And maybe it's Humphrey instead of Centurion.
Yeah, so we've got commercial uses here-
Mm-hmm.
-and we really aren't changing it. And from the topography, we just can't take access to Centurion from anything proposed with Volta Family down here. There's a gigantic hill, there's high voltage power lines, actually a corridor through here, and the accesses will have to come from Humphrey. And so if I understood the concern correctly, it was about parking on Humphrey for those particular uses. I've been led to believe, I guess, that I can't control the parking requirement, no parking, parking. I would say we, as from a site development perspective, we provide more parking than is required by code. Typically, we try to do that. There's a requirement by code to provide, you know, X number of parking stalls per dwelling, and we try to exceed that. This site plan does exceed it, that requirement, and we would try to do anything to help alleviate on-street parking, but we can't, from the development side, we can't prohibit it. But we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be up against it. If that's the ultimate question, we wouldn't oppose it.
So you're saying it's out of your hands if, you know, say we could post like no parking signs along Humphrey?
Humphrey, yep.
Or even Centurion?
Correct.
But idealistically, because of the topography, someone living in those apartments wouldn't want to park on Centurion and walk down, or, you know, they wouldn't be able to because it's too much of a slope? Even though I know they were concerned about Humphrey?
Correct. I do think, yeah, there's a tremendous slope. As further you go north, the higher the road gets. I mean, there could be down on the corner. I mean, if somebody wanted to do it, I wouldn't rule it out completely, but I would say it's kind of out of the way. I mean, if that's what they're doing.
Now, remind me, how wide is Humphrey proposed to be? Is that just a two? Is it like a two plus one? Is it?
It's an industrial standard today. I believe it's 38 feet wide. So essentially, it's designed to carry that, those semi-traffic vehicles.
So can you give me an example of something else in the city that would be similar with?
I was contemplating this, and I didn't check. I live in South Lincoln, and Granger, east of 27th Street, is wider in nature. It's more of a collector roadway, though. But they do exist. In something like this, we are changing some of the uses. Again, we would be willing to have some of those conversations with LTU as to what we can help do. Again, parking, we wouldn't oppose any restrictions of parking on it. There was even a contemplation thrown out during break. Again, I thought, well, three lanes, you kind of have a turn, center turn lane, and that would restrict their lane width and maybe help someone with some of the traffic calming, but those are things I can run by LTU and get some feedback on.
I know it's kind of tough because if you do say no parking, then that usually increases the speeds, then we're defeating the traffic calming. Other questions for the applicant right now? Do we have a motion?
I'll move-
Well, we take them in order, right?
We need to call them separately, yes.
I'll move approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19001.
Second. Sure.
Discussion. And feel free to discuss all three at the same time.
Three, okay.
You know, this is a huge site that will continue to change over time, I'm sure, as development occurs. The two issues that are, that are, on my mind at least, have to do with the traffic calming and the bridge. The, but I think both of these issues, I really want to move this forward and push this forward. I would think that both of these issues can be just further discussed between now and the time that this were to appear before the city council. In said time, I think that it's probably important for the City of Lincoln to think about traffic in and out of a center that could potentially be this size, and how important, if at all, a continuation north of Arbor, how important that is to traffic in this center. And if so, how important perhaps a shared maintenance or what have you might be for that bridge? Perhaps even in terms of goodwill than law, but, and then the other issue of traffic calming, I think it's fair and reasonable for the applicant to understand before they commit to anything as to what they're agreeing to. And I think that that's probably also another issue that could be worked out in the two or so, for more weeks, between now and city council. So I'll move to approve really a great possible addition to the City of Lincoln.
Yes, I agree. I will, I'm going to support this motion. I do, I will have a comment probably when we get to 42C about the amendment. But I appreciate, Steve, I appreciate your comments. To have that context of 14 years ago was very, very helpful. I agree with Tom's comments about the bridge issue. My point of view right now is that there's more to come on that, and we have time, I think, for both city and county to continue to talk about that. So that doesn't really bother me that much. I think there are issues there, but there are issues that can be addressed. So I'll have another comment later, but I'm going to support this motion.
I'm going to support the motion, but I do want in record to that we are representing city and county. And I really want to, I appreciate both and all the discussion that's been happening, but looking at 27 as a holistic intersection, I would strongly encourage that because I live north of town and I travel that road all the time, and there is traffic, and there's a lot of people that do head over to Highway 77 there and use that gravel road and that intersection. And I just want to make sure that we're on record recommending to come to a, like you said, maybe even a goodwill if it's not a state statute.
Jerry, go ahead and call the vote.
Okay, this is for the approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19001. Albadre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now we need to talk about the change of zone. Do I have a motion for that one?
And the annexation.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Move approval of Annexation 19001.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, same discussion points. I am going to go ahead and talk about a couple of things here. First, I want to thank the applicant for being proactive and meeting with the neighbors and the surrounding property owners. I think that's really important whenever we're dealing with applications. I am not really too concerned about the Department of Transportation comments about the noise, and the reason why is because the interstate is there first, so any residential that's built there, they're going to know it's there before they move in or build or anything like that. So I'm not too worried about that. And I'm going to kind of echo Dennis on thanking Steve for the background on the use permit, that that buffer does belong on the industrial side, but that's already been pre-existing, so that's there already. So I will support the change of zone. Jerry? Oh, annexation. Sorry, keep going in the order, it is on the report. I support the annexation. Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, this is for Conditional Approval of Annexation 19001. Albadre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now the change of zone.
Move approval for Change of Zone 19002.
Now, do you want that with the amendment, without the amendment?
No, I'm not offering it with the amendment.
Okay. With the staff amendment? No staff amendment either? Because we had two motions to amend on that one.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't have the staff amendment.
There was a memo or an email sent out.
Right. Was that today, this morning?
No, it was yesterday.
Or was that yesterday? Yesterday?
Sorry, I just don't have it in front of me.
Here it is. It was for the traffic calming, the landscape.
Yes, as amended by staff.
Okay.
Okay, so is that part of the motion? Are you making a motion to amend or include the amendment?
No, it was presented prior to this hearing, so it should be move approval as amended by staff.
Okay, and my second stands for that.
Okay, discussion.
I just wanted to make the comment that I believe that the staff motion to amend is something that I support wholeheartedly, especially the language about including the LTU department in the discussion and however that reads to the satisfaction. I think that's really important for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think LTU has a lot of expertise in this, which I think consultants, all of us who consult, need to take into consideration. Those guys are really good at providing that kind of information. Secondly, I think the comment that Bob made about, it's, the calming is important and obviously the emphasis of this, but there's an overall traffic component to this, too, including getting back to that on-street parking issue. So to me, calming and on-street parking or lack of on-street parking to accommodate the existing user on the site, I think all goes together. And that's why I just want to, I just want to say that in support of the amendment as the staff wrote it. I think that's a really important piece.
I agree, Dennis, and I think in addition, LTU can play a role in ensuring that the rights of the property owners in the area are preserved, including the industrial property-
Right.
-that's adjacent to it. So I think that's very important as well.
Good. I do, I do think a set of standards going forward for traffic calming as a design standard would be helpful in these situations because I think it is fair to developers to have an understanding as to what is expected of them prior to accepting and agreeing to conditions of an annexation and redevelopment agreement.
Yeah, and I'll support this motion with the same comments, reiterating what my fellow commissioners have said.
I agree, and I'm going to kind of echo Christie's comments before about, we represent both the city and the county. And so with that annexation, and I know we already approved it, but I wish that there was some kind of standard agreement so that we, because it's obviously happened before and it's holding up some projects, we maybe need to look at how to deal with that in the future so that it's consistent from here on out. Jerry, I think we're ready.
Okay, so this is for the Conditional Approval of Change of Zone 19002 with the amendments as presented in the memo dated October 15th.
Correct.
Okay. Albadre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Okay, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Jerry?
Okay. Albadre?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we're adjourned.